Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 2nd, 2022 County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones if you needed a listening device. Front row up here Tyler can help you although it echoes so bad in here, I can't imagine needing a listening device. The meeting minutes are on the back table in the corner and then a white folder. And if you're planning on speaking today for anything, please sign in with your name and address on the sheet in the back corner. And we have a consent agenda. If there was something that was supposed to be removed from the consent agenda, you needed to talk to somebody ahead of time. With that, we will go on to regular business. I'm going to ask that you remove the minutes from the consent agenda to make a correction on that. And I'd also ask for a motion to, well, should we do that one first? Look for a motion to remove the minutes from the consent agenda.
Move.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And then I need a motion to amend the discussion of the purchase agreement of 908 West Avenue. And if we could put that on for item number 16.
That is my motion.
My motion is second. My motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes, can we do the minutes before the consent agenda? Okay, so the change in the minutes was, do you have it?
I do. Just recently flew in.
Thank you.
To amend the minutes to change, there were proponents in attendance to speak on the topic, to there were no proponents in attendance to speak on the topic.
Thank you. My motion is their second.
Second.
My motion has a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is to consider a motion to approve the amended agenda.
It's my motion.
Second.
My motion is second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
My motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Now is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on something that's not on today's agenda, and if you just give your name.
Greetings. My name is John Cunningham. I'd like to talk about a very popular subject, voter fraud. There's a lot of national talk about a nationally organized voter fraud attempt. That's a pure hoax, but that doesn't mean there is no voter fraud. And in fact, massive voter fraud right here in Minnehaha County. I don't have the access to the entire database, but what I've looked at, I've been able to find almost a thousand, easy to find instances where a person who does not live here, lives in another state, is able to vote inside, is registered to vote and is able to vote right here in Minnehaha County. That's enough people, just in the sample that I found, that's enough people to change an election in South Dakota using out-of-state people to do that. It's illegal. I don't know what the state's attorney is doing about it because it says, let me back up. There are well over a hundred people registered to vote at the Sleep Inn in, at Russell and Kiwanis. About a thousand have been refined at an RV campground on West 12th Street and another couple of hundred at the Jellystone Campground in Brandon. And these are people who live someplace else. They do not reside there. They can't reside there. Those places aren't residential. So they could vote in their home state and they also vote in South Dakota. That's enough people to change a vote, change an election in South Dakota. We can have people from out of state controlling our elections in South Dakota. And according to state law, every person residing within the state who has a qualification as voter can register. That's 1241. People must reside here. Reside means residential, means live. And the county auditor has the complete responsibility for doing that. And I don't know what our county auditor, current county auditor is doing, but prior county auditors have ignored that issue to the extent that we now have thousands of them. And it's, for the state's attorney's information, it is a perjury. I declare under penalty of perjury that I actually live at and have no present intention of leaving the above address. But we have thousands of people who do not live here, clearly vote in their home state, who also vote a second time in South Dakota, and that is voter fraud. And that is real. And it'll be interesting to see what the county auditor does about that before the next election because it's just, it's just wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Is there anyone else for public comment?
I'll piggyback on his comments. My name is Mike Mathis. So where I stand right now with our elections is no transparency, no confidence. That's where I stand. We submitted requests throughout the state for FOIA, public information records. We got denials from 40 counties. Now Minnehahas lawyering up, getting their own lawyers. Why is that? Why do you have to get lawyers? Why can't your state's attorney just, you know, we'll talk to you about it? It's just really concerning to us. I'm up here because of my kid's future. I feel if I don't talk or if I don't get aggressive with this, I don't see anybody coming to do it. So all we want is our records. And if you give us the public records, we will leave you alone. We will go away. We just want confirmation that the elections are what you say they are. I wish you the best and God bless USA and God bless you on your judgments. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you. I am here representing myself and my neighborhood. I live at the corner of 261st and 464th Avenue. About a month ago.
Can you give me your name first?
Sorry.
Yeah.
My name is Chad Meirose, spelled M-E-I-R-O-S-E. Again, I live at the corner of 261st Street and 464th Avenue. And a month ago, my neighbor to the north at County Parcel 16031, also known as 260, 26056, 464th Avenue, was murdered. Now, we've had a bunch of issues in our neighborhood. This is primarily an ag neighborhood with various homes that live there, different people on acreages. And this place has been operating as a salvage yard for quite some time. There was three people shot, so not really a good thing. One was killed. We've had lots of problems at this property for a very long time and all of the neighbors have been afraid to come forward and say anything for fear of retribution. A year ago, I had a truck stolen from in front of my house. There's been multiple other things. I'll just run through them. My neighbor who was murdered got arrested on 11/27/2018 for having explosive devices. The ATF was at my house. My house continues to be on the news for these things, which hopefully now that he's gone will end. It's, as it's become apparent to me and talking with the people over down the hall in zoning, it's zoned for auto salvage but not auto recycling. And that was turned down in 2008, auto recycling. But that's what's been going on. They have less than savory individuals. By my count, it adds a traffic of about 10 cars per hour to our road, which is not a lot if you live in Sioux Falls, but we live in a rural area that's on a gravel road. I can't walk through my grass without getting gravel dust all over my shoes at any point in time. It's been a problem for the township. I know we have a representative of the township here. They've tried to get him to move. Now, he's passed, but they tried to get all sorts of things moved off of the road, out of the ditch. They had a mobile home that sat there for almost a year. The sheriffs are very limited in what they can do proactively. They basically have to deal with the issues retroactively. And so our safety is at risk there. Our township needs to replace a bridge, which they have to do a traffic study to see how much traffic goes by there to get some federal funds. However, now in this limbo period as it's going up for sale, we're not going to have the traffic that we possibly could have. So when I went to college, they always said, don't come with a problem without a solution. And I have a few solutions. A, it would be nice to see it rezoned. It's zoned as general industrial around A2 agricultural. It doesn't really belong there. It's been there for a long time that way. I do understand that. Another thing that's going to need to be done, and it should be done immediately, is the soils need to be remediated from oil, gas, antifreeze, and other contaminations. And that should probably happen as part of the sale or before the sale. And if nothing else, we would love to see some conditions on its future use. My neighbors would love to be here, but being at nine o'clock in the morning, most people have jobs that they can't get away from. And I would welcome any questions you may have for me about it.
At this point, we can't. This is public comment.
Okay, thank you.
But you're welcome to talk to somebody from Planning and Zoning or Jeff is their liaison.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barth is their liaison. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning. Scott Wick with the Sioux Empire Fair. Just wanted to let you know, we're all geared up. We're ready to open up on Friday evening at five o'clock. Our concert that night is Old Dominion. Weather's looking good. Hopefully, we get the Old Dominion show in. We've been trying for three years now, so we're excited about that. We have a really good lineup following that. We have Justin Moore on Saturday. Sunday's 38 Special. Monday is Sawyer Brown. Tuesday, Nelly. Wednesday, we have Shannon Dua, Billy Dean, and Wade Hayes. Thursday is Hairball. And then Friday, we have the ATV Big Air Event. And then we finish on Saturday, the 13th with two performances of the rodeo. So on behalf of the fair board, I would like to thank the county commission for your continued support. Weather's looking good and we always know it can change, but we're prepared. We have some new exciting features at the fair. We have online ticketing now that we haven't had in the past, so folks can buy their tickets online and beat the lines that are out at the gates. We also brought in another five-window ticket selling building, so that will help ease some of the backlog when people show up to buy tickets in the evening. And we also have a self-serve kiosk out at the main gate. So we operate this Friday from 5:00 PM through Saturday, the 13th, curfew at midnight with the carnival. And we're already planning for next year, so we do appreciate everything you've been doing for us. Things are looking good out there, even though we did lose over 50 trees due to the ash bore issue. How we missed the shade, but the carnival's pretty happy. They can pretty much put anything wherever they want now, so. And we are going to have more rides than last year. The carnival's fully staffed, so things are looking good. So I would answer any questions if anybody has them.
I don't think so. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you later this week. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Barth, 3209 South Manifold Avenue, Sioux Falls. I'm here also to talk about the fair, which starts this Friday. And this morning, I looked for a shirt, but all my fair shirts in the closet had shrunk, apparently. And Scott, I could use a larger one. In any case, the fairgrounds are not for sale. They've been in the media quite a bit lately about being for sale. You know, there's a culture out there that has grown over many decades, and you can't just move that to Rowena. It's where people go for the Sioux Empire Fair. The property itself certainly needs improvement, but the chatter about buying it or selling it has discouraged investment by people who are ready to build buildings out there. Certainly, we have a multi-billion dollar corporation from out of state that's moved here, bought this almost played-out quarry, and now demands we sell it to them and threatens to block our roads with trains if they don't get their way. That's the same threat, by the way, the Sweetmans gave me when I was first elected. They said, well, just park our trains blocking the streets of Sioux Falls. Well, I don't know how you tow a train except with a locomotive, but so they, it's their mistake that they bought a quarry that had no future potential. It's not my problem. The article I recently saw said that they're negotiating with commissioners. I know of no such negotiation with commissioners. Maybe they've talked to us once or twice. I know I've told them, no, it's not for sale. And I'm not here to say that this fair will be there 200 years from now, but if we don't sell the land, that rock will still be here 200 years from now, and maybe it'll be more valuable then. There's rock all over this county and, you know, think of Jasper, Minnesota, think of Dell Rapids, think of Rowena, think of Corson. It's all over. And I've heard from those that live in Corson that this out-of-state multinational is not a great neighbor. I kind of wonder about the OSHA requirements for particulate matter in the air from their crushing facility next door. So finally, I like the fair. I'll be out there a couple of days this week. Join me. Come and sign up for my campaign. The fair is not for sale. God bless America.
Any additional?
Good morning, Commissioner. Scott McMahon, Director of Metro Communications. I'm here this morning to give you a brief update on the public safety training campus that's being constructed by the city of Sioux Falls out on 60th Street North. We've had great weather this year. It's on schedule. We anticipate being able to move some of the furniture and equipment into the building by about April of next year, April 2023. Occupancy date is still October of 2023. As you recall, the county is a partner in this project for Metro Communications and has committed $2.15 million to help us with furniture, fixtures, and equipment. I will tell you already that we've made some movement in that area. The radio equipment, approximately $1.3 million, has already been ordered, and they do know that the payment will be in 2023. We've also ordered dispatch console furniture. They also know that that payment will be in 2023. We are also working with furniture for the administrative portion as well as some of the other offices, and we should have that estimate in hopefully later this month. Last is small, smaller equipment, furnishings, technology, if you will, things such as computers, monitors, switches, those types of things. We are hearing from the industry that prices may see an increase, and we're also hearing from the industry that there may be delays in getting that type of equipment. So with your permission, I would like to work with the commission office as well as the auditor's office to see if there's perhaps a recommendation we could make to the commission at a future meeting to try and move forward on some of those things for availability purposes as well as pricing, to make sure we don't see any increases. But I'll come back to you at a later point after visiting with the other two offices. So I think that's everything for today. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep.
Additional public comments?
Thanks for the segue, Commissioner Barth. I was approached as by one of the Sweetmans when I first went on the commission. Now, that's about 30 years ago. And he wanted to know how it would cost to get the fairgrounds. And I said, I can't speak to that. He said, you might consider a property trade. He said, what do you mean? I said, well, if you bought the northwest corner of I-90 and a 29, the same-sized piece of property and made that as an offer, that might be considered, but I can't speak to it. That's all I ever heard about it. It went nowhere from that point on because it had, if, from my perspective, if there was ever anything, it had to be commensurate with what property the Minnehaw County already owned as far as the fair. How many of you remember when Lifelight met out there? We saved their bacon once. They were out there at, I think it was Labor Day, it rained. And if it hadn't been for all of the asphalt out there that they could walk on, it was a muddy mess because of the rain, so they really prospered at that. Finally, we got to the point where he said, we can't do an annual event there. We have to have a contract. So the fair board, the county, went to Lifelight and said, okay, we want a three-to-five-year contract. They said, that's not unreasonable. And they finally agreed. We would sign the contract on Friday for a three-year or five-year event out at the fairgrounds. Then Tuesday afternoon, they announced to the public they were moving to Wild Water Guess who got kind of, could I say screwed in that point? One thing that impressed me was the expo building. That was built for indoor football, and nobody ever thought it would ever take place. Now we have indoor football, but the expo building has been divided into three entities or three separate units. And I wondered why they didn't tear it down and build new until, excuse me, sitting where you are at. The fair explained, no, can't do that because we have contracts going out three to five years or more, and that particular structure, and it would cost just about as much to build a new structure or maybe a little bit more, and then you'd have state-of-the-art, but you'd lose all those contracts. And then you'd have to start over again. And once a person has a contract with you and they, it's abrogated and they move somewhere else, they're probably not going to come back. So that was completely rehabbed while it was being used. Contract stayed in place. It may not be the best facility that we could have had, but we kept the contracts because it depends on user days out there. They probably have, like, Scott could probably say how many user days there are in the expo building, but I would wager that there are at least one thing per day in that structure in the course of a year. So it is a service to the community, and we have the opportunity in Minnehaw County to have one of the attractive event locations in the upper Midwest. I mean, we're on two interstates. We're exit off, exit or entrance on, easy for anybody. And I've been to a few of the other event centers, even in Las Vegas where they have the National Rodeo. It's right on the interstate. No problem. Easy to do. The only problem Minnehaw County has is it treats the fair like the state legislature treats county government. More to do, no money to do it with. And that's one of the things that I would really like to see the county work at is increasing their income in some way, shape, or form, because everything's been taken away. Commissioner Jim Zwieb once said, if the county could get one cent sales tax, they could abolish their property tax needs, and they'd fare far better. Have a good day.
Thanks, Bob.
And this is the fifth place that you've met in since I've been coming to county commissioners. Pay the rent.
So any other public comments? Okay, not seeing anything. We will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider a declaration of, actually, I'm just going to let you, Kevin, go ahead. This was a public nuisance, but it's going to be taken off the agenda, I believe, so I'm not even going to read the whole thing.
All right. Yes, so this was supposed to be a public hearing for a public nuisance declaration, but I am pleased to say that yesterday, staff visited the property of Keith Dement and took a photo and saw that the grain bin has been removed, so we do not need to take any action on this item.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
We don't need to do anything for the record. Thanks, Kevin.
Madam Chair, I'd just say that's wonderful news because we don't like to have to mess around with this stuff, and thank you.
Item number 11 is a public hearing to consider the package off-sale liquor licenses for the Wall Lake Oil Company. Kim Christensen is our recorder, so she's going to do dual duty here today.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Christensen with the auditor's office. We received an application for a package off-sale liquor license from Wall Lake Oil. The property is located outside of Hartford. The application was reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department, and no questions or objections were raised. Wall Lake Oil, they currently have an on and off-sale malt liquor and SD farm license. Under Minnehaw County Resolution 22-23 and Minnehaw County Ordinance 2159, a total of 13 off-sale liquor licenses are available for the county. Currently, we have one active off-sale liquor license within Minnehaw County. The fee for a new license set by the resolution is currently $1,200 plus a $50 publishing fee.
Thanks, Kim. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Oh, excuse me. Wait a minute. It's a public hearing. Sorry. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this liquor license? Is there anyone that wants to speak opposed to this liquor license? Okay, now I would take your motion.
Move approval.
Second.
My motion is second with a roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is a public hearing to consider the retail on sale, on-off sale of liquor and wine licenses for the A Homestead Brewery. Kim again.
Kim with the auditor's office again. We received an application for a retail on and off-sale wine and cider application for a homestead brew located outside of Valley Springs. The application was reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney, and Planning Department. No questions or concerns were reported. They currently hold an off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm license, and the fee for a new license is $500 plus a $50 publishing fee.
This is also a public hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this license? Anyone who wants to speak against this license?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Barth.
How come every time I drive there, they're closed?
I can answer that.
You could, yes, go pick up the podium.
My name's Nancy Kruland, and I'm one of the owners of the business, and we're only open on Friday and Saturday. We are nine miles from anywhere, so it's hard to get, we don't have walk-by traffic. And the reason we've applied for this license now is because we are starting to do some weddings and dinners, and people like wine, so we need to do that. But we would love to be open more if we could get some more people to know about us and get out there.
What are the hours?
When would you like to come out? I'll open up.
What are the hours? What time are they open? Or are you open?
We're open at five o'clock on Fridays and then two on Saturdays. And we're open, and we have an anniversary party this Saturday with great food and music, so you should come out.
Thank you.
I've been there. It is a lovely place. So if you're looking for something different, this is a very nice place.
It's a great place.
Very nice place. Okay, I didn't have any opposition, and I had one question which was answered, and so I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
My motion is second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hamburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is authorize a chair to sign a professional service agreement between Minnehaw County and the Civil Design, Inc. for design of Project MC 22-06 Structures 50-1 01-080 replacement. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Commissioners. Steve Goron, Highway Superintendent. Back on June 21st, you approved a contract of prime construction to replace the structure on Highway 118 west of Tri Valley School. We had a design agreement with CDI, Inc. to do the design for the bridge. Now we're asking your permission to execute a construction agreement with CDI so they can handle our contract administration.
Any questions for Steve?
Thanks for the map. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
My motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number 14 is consider a temporary zoning ordinance for gas and liquid transmission pipelines. Tyler Clack.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. South Dakota Codified Law 11-210 permits counties to adopt a temporary zoning ordinance to classify and regulate uses and related manners. The procedure outlined in SDCL 11-210 requires at least one public hearing, notice of which must occur at least 10 days before. The draft temporary zoning ordinance, which was last discussed on June 21st, 2022, has not been changed and is included for your review. The request for you today is to determine whether a notice of public hearing should be posted or should be published for consideration of a gas and liquid transmission pipeline temporary zoning ordinance. As additional information, the table attached to this packet shows a history of the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline as it relates to Minnehaw County's commission meetings and some general activities related to the PUC and the pipeline itself. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Okay. Any questions for Tyler?
Okay. This is obviously what he just said. This is to consider a temporary zoning ordinance. And I think by show of the history that we've had, we've had a lot of public comment. I don't feel like we have any new information. We were given a law firm paper today, but I think all of us had already received that before with an opinion on it. So I am not intending to take public comment this morning just because this isn't a public hearing and we have heard probably everything, plus we've had lots of phone calls and lots of emails and lots of text messages and personal conversations. So I think we're well aware of what it is. And so I would turn it over to the Commissions for comment. Commissioner Barth?
We have quite a few people here that I think would like to speak on it. Are, we're not going to let them?
I think, I think they knew ahead of time because we have already had, unless there's something brand new, I think we have every bit of information we need to make a decision to move forward.
Well, I, I do have a question that's not been discussed. You know, I see that Dan Liederman is here, who's a top lobbyist for the Summit Pipeline people. He's wearing their shirt emblazoned with Summit Pipeline Solutions. Dan, how much are they paying you to do that? And how much have, have, how many other legislators and elected officials have you sold to the Summit Pipeline people? That's my question. I think that's out of order, Madam Chair.
I do too, Jeff. I don't think you can ask those types of questions of people in the public. If you would like to talk to Mr. Liederman on the side, maybe he'd be interested.
He's wearing the shirt right now.
But I don't think he has.
He's here in the meeting. I expect he planned it, planned to speak.
He's not speaking.
Oh, there's no defense anyway.
Commissioner Bender?
So I believe that the, the point of what we're trying to discuss here today is whether we want to set a public hearing on the temporary ordinance that was posted as part of the meeting materials for today. And I think that, you know, from conversations that I've had with Commissioners and with others, the reason we haven't had a set of hearing yet is because we've been waiting for the PUC to establish a timeline for how they're going to address this issue. And right now they have no timeline because they're waiting for Summit Pipeline to submit routing information. And so it seems to me that if we're going to establish a timeframe to put together any ordinance, what we would want to wait until we had all the information available, which would include that timeline is set by the PUC, which is comparable to what we did with the marijuana ordinance. We waited until there was a timeline set. We had all the information available from the state and then we looked at our ordinance. I think a similar process is in order here. And I think that we could wait until the time that the PUC sets that timeframe for us to schedule a hearing if we decide we want to move forward with this ordinance at that time. And that, that would be my preference. That said, I, I would say that from the additional research that we've been able to do in the, and that we've been able to look at, I think in the past, what we've said publicly is that our primary concern is about safety issues. And that would be, I mean, that was my primary concern about why I'd be interested in moving forward with this ordinance. And I don't want to give any false hopes to any folks sitting here or who are paying attention to this issue because I know there are a lot of people. I think it's very clear that the federal government has taken complete control of that issue and that we have no ability as a commission to establish ordinances that affect safety. But that is, that's the federal government is, is, it's called preempted, means they have taken complete control of that and their regulations are final. So you would be much better using your time to lobby your federal representatives on that issue if your concern is primarily safety, which is a lot of the issues that people have brought forward to us and that, that I have been most concerned about. I think we have some limited ability to put forth ordinances that affect surface issues, maybe routing a little bit, but I don't think that we really have the authority to affect the issues that most people have expressed concerns about. And so I just wanted to get that out there because I, I think that, I think it's a disservice for us to let people believe that we have any real authority to affect safety issues in this area.
Commissioner Kerski?
My thought process, I believe, is along the line as Commissioner Bender. As counties, we have the ability, one time, to set a moratorium on pipelines. We can do it for one year and it can be extended for a year. Was handed a letter this morning by an, from an Aberdeen law firm written by an attorney. It's of course, one attorney's opinion, and I think we have a lot of attorneys, so we can get a lot of opinions, but one sentence jumped out at me. It says, "Counties should proceed with caution in passing moratoriums to simply delay the process. Counties are required to conduct or in good faith intend to conduct studies within a reasonable time for the purpose of considering a comprehensive plan." To jump into a moratorium just to do it just absolutely makes no sense to me. I mean, I, I think we have to have a purpose. As Commissioner Bender said, we're limited in scope as to what we can control. Some people would like to believe that we have all this authority and we can say it can't be within two miles of a school or with, it has to be six feet deep. We can't control those things, not from what I've understood, I've been reading. We have very limited authority. We can't control eminent domain. That's a legal process. We have nothing to do with eminent domain. So we can do a moratorium, but we have to have a purpose for our moratorium. I think it's, at this point, like I said, we get one shot and if we don't get it right and do the timing right and, and have a good reason for it, it's an all and void. So I'm, I'm really want to proceed with caution in doing this. I know other counties have jumped in. County Commissioners are under pressure from their constituents. I get that, but I think we have to do it right. So I'm in favor of kind of letting this play out a little bit more.
Commissioner Barth?
Surprisingly, I don't agree completely. You know, this letter from the SDPAA saying basically that they won't represent us in a case of a lawsuit, it seems unconscionable. They would take a side on this unless they too have had some special pressure put on them. I know the attorney for the pipeline opponents doesn't agree with the assessment that the federal government has complete control. And even if they do have complete control, doing something that threatens people's actual lives, much less their livelihoods, what do we have besides our land and our lives? Wild Water West out there, potentially a gas cloud of this, it's not poisonous, it's just an asphyxiant, could, could show up and, and poison hundreds of people at that. Oh my goodness. Donuts next, two weeks. Next week, we don't meet. But anyway, we cannot let human life be subject to the wiles of international agents and their multi-billion dollar investments to benefit just a few people and do nothing for Minnehaha County. And, you know, perhaps you're right. Perhaps we need new federal senators and congresspeople. We used to have some that were representing people well. Let's do that again, folks. But in the meantime, I think we are allowed to do this and we should push against those paid goons who are trying to stop us.
Well, I totally agree with Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Kerski, and I'm not going to add anything to what they've already said, except it seems to me that the PUC, by delaying public comments and public input and doing more research, has actually given all of us a moratorium informally, if you will, by looking at the facts that they are doing research on. And they're the ones that have the responsibility and the authority to issue the permits. So at this point, I don't see any real need to move quickly on this until we have all the information. And frankly, we've gotten plenty of information from various individuals, both in favor of and against. You have landowners that are concerned, that have already made an agreement with some of the individuals that are involved. And we've had counties who have frankly backed away from moratoriums because they figured that, that's not going to happen. It's a legal issue that needs to be addressed. Hand County for one. So I don't think that just because we have internal pressure in the county right now from individuals that we have to make this decision today.
There's no public comment on this one?
I have a question on what you guys are discussing.
We're, you can look at the agenda, but there is no public comment at this point. So you can look at the agenda. Excuse me, Mr. Meyer. No, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Meyer, we are talking about the agenda right now and there's no public comment on this agenda item. We've had repeated, repeated comments on this. We did, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Meyer, if you cannot respect the rules of the commission, you'll have to walk out. Back to the discussion of the temporary zoning ordinance. I have a few facts that our commission office pulled together for us that maybe everybody else isn't aware of. I was not aware of these. But large CO2 pipelines, the first one was built in the 1970s. And as of 2015, there are nearly 50 pipelines already with a combined length of 400, excuse me, 4,500 miles. And between 2010 and 2015, there were only 21 accidents, accidental releases incidents with a CO2 pipeline. And as a result of that, there were no fatalities and no injuries. I'm not saying it can't happen. We are all concerned about the safety of our citizens. I am in support of waiting on this moratorium because I don't know what the PUC is going to do. And as Commissioner Kerski said, I'm concerned if they keep delaying it out, what if our moratorium runs out in that time? Why not do like we did with marijuana issue and we waited until we knew what the state was going to do before we put into effect what we were going to do? I think this is the wisest decision to do. We're basically wasting you guys' time coming back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, having these discussions until we have gathered all the information. We have our attorneys watching this and we also have all of you watching this. And so I'd be in support of deferring this until a later date that we can figure out what the PUC is doing so we can make wise decisions and not just put a moratorium in to put a moratorium in.
Madam Chair, you know, that's a good point. Certainly, we don't know what the, what the stopwatch is on this project. I do know that Chris Nelson, PUC Commissioner, says that counties do have the authority to do planning and zoning for, for pipelines. And I also know that Hand County had a private meeting with pipeline advocates and then came out of that meeting without it being on the agenda and repealed their moratorium. Harrisburg got $175,000 for their baseball team, for their baseball field. This is a full-court pressure from a multi-billion international corporation. And they're going to squish each one of us, one at a time. They're going to squish each, each landowner one at a time. They're going to jam this thing through and it's not good. Anyway, thank you.
I think it's important for us to keep a level head. We need to continue in this time to lobby the legislators at the U.S. Capitol who have more control than we do and to talk to your PUC. And we will continue to watch this as we go forward. I don't have a motion, so I don't know what this even looks like yet.
Are you looking for a motion?
I would look for a motion.
Okay.
If you had one.
I would, I would make a motion to defer consideration of the temporary zoning ordinance until such time as the PUC has established a timeline for their consideration of this matter.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, you know, I guess I do have one additional comment. This big bad pipeline, I understand, you know, that people's property rights and, you know, what's, you shouldn't be able to take something from mine that belongs to me. I, I get all that, but, I mean, we also talk a lot about CO2 in general and how bad it is for our environment, how it's all being released into the air. A company comes in, says, "We can capture all this CO2 and we can ship it and bury it into the ground two miles below the surface in, in North Dakota where nobody cares." But it's the pipeline that's the problem. It's not the CO2. And in reality, it's the CO2 that's the problem because we're trying to figure out ways to save our environment, protect ourselves from greenhouse gases, which CO2 is. I, I, you know, don't lose sight of the big picture, I guess, is what my point is. And this is about removing CO2 that's being emitted into our atmosphere and putting it into a place that hopefully does no harm. In the meantime, we have to have a way to get it there. It's a pipeline. As you've said, there's been a few pipelines, yeah. No, no pipeline is perfect. It's not poisonous. It displaces oxygen and there, there are legitimate concerns about that that we need to be thinking about moving forward. And that's what we're doing. I mean, we're just really trying to figure out what this is all about. But big picture, this is about removing carbon from the, carbon dioxide from the atmosphere.
Any other comments?
I have a motion and a second to defer until the PUC has made a clear, a clear.
Timeline.
Timeline, that's what I was looking for, a clear timeline so that we can put this back on our agenda. So I think we should do a roll call vote.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Barth?
No.
Kerski?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye. Motion passes four to one. Item number 15 is consider a motion to compromise a lien, DPNO number 71147 in full with no payment or to release the lien only as far as the real property. Melinda, you want to wait just a second?
Good morning, Commissioners. Melinda Storley, Commission Office. The request today is to consider a motion to compromise lien, DPNO 71147 in full with no payment or to release the lien only insofar as a real property at 2616 Southwest Avenue, Sioux Falls. The petitioner is the mother of the lienee who deceased on July 10, 2022. She presented a death certificate to this office and is asking that her son's lien be released in full. The remaining balance of the lien represents poor relief except for $158.20 for legal representation. The lienee did make one $25 payment toward the poor relief recorded June 27, 2022. The lienee was last employed March 2021. The application for poor relief shows a gross resources total of $15,805.76 as of March 30, 2022. His monthly expenses at that time totaled $1,734.51. The petitioner explains that her son had been ill and required medical care since 2020. He did not have a will, had not filed income taxes for the last two years, and that the little savings he had was used for his cremation. The funeral has been delayed until October. One concern the petitioner expresses is that this lien is attached to her real property and although there is no real estate transaction at this time, she hopes to satisfy the lien now so that it will not interfere with the sale of the home in the future.
Questions from Melinda on this DPNO?
So is it clear that the, the applicant is the only owner on that, on this property at this time? Does, is the?
The petitioner?
Yeah, the petitioner, sorry.
Yes.
So she, the property is 100% in her name only.
Yes.
And the petitioner isn't here.
No.
Okay. So publicly, I would just extend our sympathies to her. She has just lost her son, so, after an illness and so, not fun. Commissioner Kerski?
Was the son a minor at the time? Is that how the lien got placed on her property? Was the son a minor at the time? Is that how the lien got placed on her property? I'm trying to.
Yes, yes. It originated when he was living at home and then left shortly after on his own. So when you look at the legal representation record of addresses, you can see that he has been living somewhere else, so.
So he's paid two, he paid some of his bills, which were back from two thousand and seventeen, and then there was nothing until,
Twenty-one.
Two thousand and twenty-one and a very large poor relief, at that point. So he wasn't living at home anymore. He'd aged out.
Madam Chair, since most of that is for the medical care and not any criminal stuff, I'd make a motion to, accept this and release it without payment.
Commissioner Karski.
I would second, but my question is, I mean, we're just releasing it from the property. We can't put this on a deceased person. We can't put lien at, so I mean, we're just,
Dismissing it basically.
Dismissing it in its entirety.
Require a different motion? I'll ask our esteemed attorney.
I was, I was just going to say, if we just release it, as far as the property goes, if it is found later that he has any assets, it would go towards the lien or at least there'd be a possibility. We don't have to do that. A lot of times, I would go to state's attorney in case you have a comment.
Madam Chair, Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. My preference to maintain at least the possibility that there could be some collection from the estate is just to remove it from the property of the mother rather than to do a complete, zeroing out of the lien altogether. So I think that's the only request that we have in front of us as well.
So we're putting the lien on the estate of the individual?
No, the lien is on his name.
On his name.
So we would just, all we would do is remove the house.
And once probate is closed, I mean, does that, I mean.
It eventually disappears.
It just, okay.
After so many years on the book, they clean some of them out.
Okay.
Do you want to change your motion, Commissioner Barth?
Yes, I'll change it to whatever we've decided here. That helps.
A motion to, a motion to release the property as far as the,
Release the lien only insofar as the real property.
Thank you. Now we got it.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. I need a roll call vote.
Barth.
Yes.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda. Item number sixteen is authorize the chairman to sign an amended purchase agreement for the sale of the county surface property, county surplus property located at nine oh eight Northwest. Tyler. Oh, we're going to have the State's Attorney's Office talk about it.
Didn't want to have a fight with Tyler. If you'd like to, he can certainly come up. Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office, Madam Chair, and members of the commission, we did receive a request from the potential, offer or buyer of this property to reconsider the motion that had been passed at the last meeting. That motion being, at least in one respect, that the chair's permission to sign that agreement was with the contingency that that sixty-day, due diligence period, as they labeled it in the proposed purchase agreement, be removed from that purchase agreement and so that there was no contingency to that level. That is the issue in front of you today is whether or not you would, that they are actually insisting, the, the potential buyer anyways, asking that that be put back in. There was one additional change. We've agreed to remove that additional change. So the only issue today is whether or not to, replace that sixty-day due diligence period, during which period we would not market or otherwise, accept any offers on, on the property. So.
Any questions for Eric? Look for a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase offer with the, the right to market removed from the sixty-day free look.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. No additional comments. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the commission liaison reports.
We've been meeting as part of the Safety and Justice Challenge. There's some opportunity to renew a portion of that grant, so there's been a lot of meetings and visits about that. But as part of that, I just wanted to make, bring to everyone's attention that they're, they've been holding community engagement, neighborhood events, which are always lots of fun. You get opportunity to meet a lot of new people. And there's a, a summer block party tonight, at Emerson Park, five fifteen South Lake Avenue from six to eight P M. There's free food and inflatables. What more could you ask in life? So, hope people can attend.
And it's open to everybody. It's, it's a community project and so it's open to everybody. If you'd like to come and meet some of the people in that community, it would be great to see your faces there. Are there any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth.
I guess it's sort of liaison. You know, the one fellow that spoke earlier about the junkyard where the, there was a murder and stuff, that property is going to be auctioned. And I talked to Art Nordstrom. He thought it would be a lot of money there. And it's, it's really looking a lot worse than it used to because I think during the derecho, that their fence that, prevented us from seeing that eyesore disappeared. And I know the sheriff's office has had issues out there because there is no supervision of that property right now. Which reminds me, we've also had some issues at Wall Lake, but that junkyard is going to go away. It was grandfathered in because it was before we had zoning in the county. And that makes it difficult, even with the advice of a brilliant attorney, to get rid of some of these things. But, I think it's going to go away. Traffic should settle down. And it's really bad when you drive by there.
I've been up there. It's bad. Any other liaison reports?
Commissioner? On Thursday, I'll be in peer for the South Dakota Association of Counties Commissioners meetings. We have our Resolutions Committee. We'll be meeting at nine o'clock, pretty much full day. Of course, regular routine business. We're going to, be amending the bylaws, kind of updating and amending. Last Friday, I met with, Eric Erickson and Chris Jacobson from the Executive Director of the Association at Cutler Law Firm where Mr. Erickson works as our lobbyist. We had about a two-hour meeting going over the bylaws, so, you know, all that fun, exciting stuff. So we're going to be talking about that. Continuity plan for the association in case, you know, building burns down or whatever. Recent new hire for the association, an assistant for Chris. His name is Cade Haley. Originally, I believe, from the Mitchell area. Seems like a pretty sharp young man. So, quite a bit going on. It'll be a full day out in peer for me on, on Thursday.
Thanks for serving. That's another thing on your list of things to do. So. Any other liaison reports? All right. With that, is there any non-action commission discussion? Formerly old business and new business. Commissioner.
I've had a number of phone calls about the metro management contracts that evidently some people have become aware of. Commissioner Karski and I are on that committee. Frankly, that's a joint agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, and that agreement's been in place for many, many years. So we have a responsibility to contribute a percentage of the cost of that particular function. So, I just want to clarify that we are involved in those conversations.
Okay. All right. If there are no other liaison reports and no non-action, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your work.
Kind of a game changer when you don't have exact.